Okay, and we are back from our tour at Five Flags. So Marie, we're going to just go straight to you, and you can go on with your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Marie Ware, and I'm the Leisure Services Manager. Thank you all for touring the Five Flags Civic Center, which has the arena and the theater as a part of it. If we look at our history, we have to look back to where we've been with our theater. A bond referendum was passed in August of 1976, and the building opened in 1979. It was a $3.7 million project back at that time. As I referred to during our tour, the most major renovation that had been done was done in 2005, and that was just a little over $2 million. And since then, the projects that we've done have just been smaller capital projects as we've gone along. The city council made a part of their council goals and priorities either a top or a high priority. Since 2016 to 2023, you've had this as a high priority. And this year, it is obviously on the high priority with you asking for options, funding mechanisms, directions, and next steps. So that's what we're here to kind of talk about. There's been a lot of people that have been involved and that have weighed in on Five Flags over the time that we've been doing our studies. And of really most importance is when we had the Imagine Dubuque, which that involves so many different people, as you know. And within the community facilities section, it calls out that implementing a plan for the future of Five Flags is a really important thing to the public to be able to accomplish. Our past engagement within this project, which all has been important, and that engagement can still be used today. We did site tours, just like we did with you. We had community surveys and a really robust community engagement. We involved the Chamber, the Main Street, lots of different organizations. We involved the arts organizations that are a part of it. We involved those planners and promoters to tell us what they thought, because they're the ones that select us as a location for events and activities. So we've had community input, and then, of course, every step that we've been to you and/or the Civic Center Commission, there has been involvement. The Civic Center Commission has been extremely involved within this process, as you know, and they have done a yeoman's job of being able to listen to the public, reflect upon that, and bring you recommendations. Also, the ASM Global staff has been very much involved in the process in giving us a lot of data and information that helps us to move forward. In 2018, when we did our original study, the consultant came with key findings, and that's what you see here today. We have a market that supports both the arena and the theater, so the ability to continue that is there. This has been a longstanding asset to our community, and that was something that the public told us. They also said the quality of life would be negatively impacted if we did not have this. The theater, obviously, is a historic asset, and it should be protected as a part of this. The ideal location really is a downtown. Most communities that try and do projects like ours, they'd love to locate these things in downtowns. Most of the time, they don't have the opportunity. We do have that here. So the findings of that study are still relevant today, and that's important to note. Five Flags remains viable. A lot of people said, what's going to happen after we went through the pandemic and the number of events and activities, how that's going to happen? What you see here is event days, and as you track through the years, yes, we saw that dip. We had a polar vortex the one year right before the pandemic, so that's why you see that drop. But as you see in fiscal year '22, our event days are building back up again. We also use many of the different facilities and areas. So what you see here is that the arena, the theater, and then other means, they'll combine it. So a question was asked, do we use the other rooms and things like that? There are times when events will have floor space, but they're also using the other rooms within the facility or other areas within the facility. It's not always just one space that they're occupying for that event. The engagement that was, that we heard loud and clear was that there are things we should incorporate during design, and those are still things that we can incorporate now into this date. We talked about while we were there, the seat comforts, the sightlines, Wi-Fi coverage, the sound system, and the number of restrooms. Those all rang very true when we did our first engagement, and if you ask people today that went to the facility, they would be saying the same things. So any things that we would consider as improvements to our facility, these need to be taken into account. So the proposal for the city council's consideration, one of the things that we did was if a bond vote was going to fail, we had budgeted and made a commitment, you all had, that's the collective "we," that we would put $6 million aside. So if a referendum would have failed, there's still things we need to fix. As we talked about, there's different pieces of that facility that need fixed right now because there are issues. So we had set that aside. And as you know from your meeting last week, then there was funding that was previously budgeted for a parking ramp. And since that now does not need to be done, at this point, that would give approximately $18 million to be able to look to use in a different way and potentially with this project. If you total those two together, that gives you approximately $24 million in funding. And that funding is from the downtown urban renewal. And what can be done is for that to be a bonded project. That means that the funding source requires a vote of the city council, but does not require a referendum vote. So whereas in other times when I've presented, the referendum vote was the option that needed because of the type of funding source it is, this funding source would not necessarily require that. It also is a funding source that would not increase your property taxes as well. The Civic Center Commission has made it clear that from day one, they wanted to be able to make sure that this continued to provide, the Five Flags Civic Center continued to provide as an entertainment center and a theater that our community can be proud of. And you see their quote there. They gave a recommendation to you that's in your packet, and both of these quotes come from that packet. They strongly support the idea of investing the $24 million of that debt capacity to be able to do a project that can move improvements within the Five Flags Civic Center. So the current footprint. So as we talk about a potential project, then the current footprint is that block. It's one city block. As you know, it's surrounded on each side by Locust and Main and Fourth and Fifth. When you see it, this is the current layout of the facility. So as we toured, we kind of toured very quickly through all of these areas. So you can always look back to this, because this also shows those storage areas. It shows where all the different pieces are to the facility, as well as where those restrooms are at. So what can you do with $24 million? So when trying to bring something for your consideration, when we looked at what happened, we moved through the studies and chose different options based upon the input at the time. If you go back to Scenario 2, which was in the original study, this does not mean that you have to do Scenario 2. It's just to give you an idea, if you do a project, what's the types of things that could be done. And so Scenario 2 within that particular project was $18.6 million. And outlined within what I sent as a part of your and as a part of the council packet was an appendix where it said, it broke down, it said, these are the types of things that would be in that $18 million. The other thing to understand is because it's not a total renovation, it wouldn't be like you wipe everything out and you start all over, you pick those kinds of items, that means that you would still have capital costs every year. So as you know, I come for budget once a year, and we talk about capital improvements at our different facilities. So if you did a project, it would still mean that there would be things that would be coming over the next 15 years within that facility, because we wouldn't be able to touch everything that needed to be replaced. And so as you see, this is kind of an example. So right now, this is our current capital budget. It shows that $6 million. That's the top line. And what you would see in the future would be just other items that might be listed. So whereas we've called out certain things with the arena, we've called out certain things with the theater that need replaced. If those were replaced, it wouldn't be that list, but it would be other things that weren't replaced, and that's what you would be seeing within the future. So if we don't do Scenario 2 exactly, what are the types of things that we would need to be able to do? Well, in the study and assessment, they broke it down into categories. There's deferred maintenance projects. So the roof, absolutely. One of the things that has to be done. We do have leaks in the roof, and that's a really important thing to address. The HVAC system, there's been times where it clunks out, and you're at a concert, and it gets a little hot in there. And that's really, patron comfort is huge to being able to make sure that you have people coming back to your facility. Energy efficiency updates, those kinds of things. Life safety and code compliance. We talked about the types of things. We have one elevator within the facility that is for both people and freight. So if you need to move things up and down, we have one. The opportunity to be able to put in an elevator that would be able to access other areas is something that's really important. We talked about those entrances and making sure that we have safe entrances. Security improvements, of course, as you see now, that's a very important thing for people to be able to know that when they come to a facility, that they feel safe and Event marketability, so it's those seating arrangements, being able to move that facility around and make it very multipurpose. Updating the dressing rooms, you saw what those dressing rooms look like. They're definitely 1970s plain Jane dressing rooms. Looking at the black box theater, of being able to do upgrades within that. Patron amenities, we talked about ADA when we were there, and I pointed out some of the ADA concerns. Concessions, very much an important improvement, the seating, the restrooms. And then operations, it's things as simple as upgrading some of the electrical systems and making sure that they work to the best of our ability. Now, there's always a potential to be able to look towards the future, and that's one of the things the Civic Center Commission has suggested as a part of this, is to consider, yes, we think that utilizing this money is important, but we do see that down the road there could be another option. There was a point when we had said, maybe there's something else we can look at. Is there another scenario? And so one of the things that they did is they found a couple examples where you could make it an indoor/outdoor, being able to open to the north, being able to make a plaza sort of a space. And so what they said is that we don't want to inhibit moving ahead, but we also would like it that when you're designing anything that you might be considering, you just make sure that this could be an option for the future. So something that wouldn't have to be done right now, but could be built into a design and looking forward. So we saw the current restrooms. This is what they look like. Right before COVID, I had the opportunity to go to Sioux Falls to tour their new facility, because I was just trying to get an idea of what do new facilities look like, what are some of the amenities? So these pictures are from there. It doesn't mean it would be, anything that you did would be exactly like this, but it kind of gives you the idea. And so when you see the restrooms, what you see, we talked about having lots more space, having stacking capacity. When you see the top left-hand, there is some stalls on the right and stalls on the left. So you would be in the middle, being able to stack in and move in, giving lots of space in those areas. In the concession stands, you can see, this was the most recent updated one, concession stands have really changed in how people make purchases and it's marketed to you. So the opportunity to be able to actually have the space to be able to do it, have the stacking capacity, but also having little seating areas and other areas where you can buy maybe over here, a little stand over here that's a specialty, or a little stand that's over here. So you take and move it so you have more people in more spaces, not stacking up all in one space. So there's a lot of ways that you can look at being able to improve that. The seating, of course, is really important. Like I said, when you talk about premium seating or other kinds of seating, just first of all, replacing some of the seats that you have to make them for better comfort, but also there's opportunities that some people will pay a premium to be able to have a larger seat area, to be able to have more room for their legs and things like that. And so the opportunity to be able to look at those kinds of options. And then with even in the back of house, those places where the talent goes, but also those places where there's a lot of people that come with a show, as you know. So a lot of times, they pull up with the different semis, they have the equipment, the ability to feed that group of people, give them a space to be able to do that, and also have nice restroom facilities and other things for them to be able to use in those spaces. So can all of this be designed in? It just depends, obviously, on your choices, but I show you these just to give you some ideas of if you think about doing renovations, there are options and possibilities. When we did our study, one of the things that they looked at, we talked about that third level of theater. In order to do that, you would create, and this was their conceptual drawing of how you could do that. So when you came in from the east side, coming into where we were standing there kind of by the theater, placing an elevator in that general space that could then take you up to that third floor, but also take you to the second floor, because we have no second floor availability to get up to the theater. And so it kind of allows that as an opportunity. So that was something that they looked at. Additionally, the timing of the project. So if we were going to do a project, and these are all ifs, this is just to lay out a number of facts for your consideration. If we were going to do a project, we would look at fiscal year '23, which we're in right now, and fiscal year '24 to be able to do an RFP for those architectural services. In doing that, there would be this engagement that would happen. There would be, okay, we're going to have to make choices. Let's talk about what some of those choices are, what are the things that we make as a part of this project, being able to obviously select the architect. We do have $600,000 available in this current fiscal year. So if you decided this is something you wanted to do, we do have the availability of that funding at this time. In fiscal year '24 and '25, we would look at the design, the bidding, and maybe even the initial construction, and then through '25 and '26, being able to construct. We would have to work as we went through this process to determine if we could keep a portion of Five Flags open. In other words, maybe the theater's open, but maybe the arena part is not. Or depending upon how you kind of phase that out, you might be able to do that. One cannot say because you don't know what your project is, but it is an opportunity to be able to look and see if we can do that. Like I said, we would engage the public into it, because it's not like we go right now and say, this is exactly what it is. What I'm sharing is that with a pool of money, you could do a certain number of improvements, and that's why the Scenario 2 is just kind of like it's this thing that shows you the types of things that could be done. And it doesn't mean it's the list. So what that would mean is this community engagement component is very important. So we'd again have the Civic Center Commission, we would look at our user groups like Symphony, Fly By Night, and others, engage them again. We would definitely engage the ASM Global staff and their corporate office, because their corporate office works with cities all across the country who do remodels or who do renovations or new projects, and they can bring ideas that maybe we wouldn't necessarily think about. And then, of course, our customers, of being able to make sure that they're a part of that, because that will help us to move forward, that everybody is then clear as to the project. And of course, that would come back to you, because you all would have to help us to move that project forward through the bidding processes and bonding processes and all those kinds of things. So with that, that's a very, very fast presentation, but it gives you an opportunity to think about a potential path forward with Five Flags with some money that could be available for the project.
Well, I'm impressed, Marie, with a tour and that presentation, all within an hour and leaving us 30 minutes to be able to have a good discussion here. So thank you very much for that. So we have time for questions and a discussion. I know I have a few, but I'll open the floor here to the rest of my council members.
Mr. Resnick. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for all the information and lots of great choices that we're going to have to buy this and not that, and do this and not that. So yeah, I'm looking forward to that process. So when I was looking at things tonight, when I talk to people, maybe it's just the people I talk to, but they love the theater and they like the Civic Center. They love the theater and they like the Civic Center. So I'm hoping that we can do and find some spots in there to really keep that going and lively and useful for today's production companies. My question, and maybe this is for Mr. Van Milligan, but is there historical tax credits and other, you know, it's such a wonderful historic building, would that be a possible funding site for this?
So our experience is that local governments aren't eligible for historic tax credits. You might remember when we wanted to redesign or renovate the old fire station on 18th Street, we had to sell it to Heartland Financial Community Development Organization. They then renovated it and accessed the historic tax credits and then ended up selling it back to us. So I guess that worked out, but the answer is, I don't believe that we qualify for historic tax credits.
Does Dubuque initiatives, would that be a possibility?
I guess it could be if they were in that business.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, thank you. The, yeah, the theater, I noticed being in there myself quite a bit, that the side spaces looks like we're confined with that, you can't get off stage left and stage right the way that sometimes that, and have you been up to the third floor, the third levels? I've been up there, and it's scary up there. I mean, I don't know, that's maybe something we can think about later, as far as I'm concerned. We have 700 seats right now, and it looks like from, what I'm getting from citizens is, and you mentioned, they'd like some more room and legroom especially, and maybe they'll be instead of 700 seats, 600, or I don't know how they're going to design them, but, and new bathrooms and things that they'd love to do. So I really appreciate, you know, I'm looking at this list of possibilities, and the lift for the pit orchestra is in here as far as something that we could consider. But I'd love to keep that going strong and do as much, of course, as we can for Civic Center as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Resnick. First off, I want to thank the Commission very much for the work that they put into this and to the letters and the documentation that we received. And when you talk about the downtown urban renewal, and we have been talking about the cultural corridor, this, of course, is part of that. So I think there is just enthusiasm and energy for that. I was very impressed with the idea that they wanted it to be realistic yet innovative on the Phase 1, which is the $24 million for the restoration, and thank you very much for that tour, by the way. But I was even more interested in the outdoor arena as a potential Phase 2, and I have received a lot of comments about that. And I've actually been to the arena in Columbus, Ohio, and then there's also an amphitheater in Cedar Rapids, which has kind of the same look and feel, if you will, and those things are very well received and just a great way to have that patron comfort and the patron experience expanded. So I'm very much appreciative of that. The other question I have is, would it not be possible, and this is really more for DSLR for the Symphony, to see if they can do some fundraising on behalf of the theater, to see if there are funds available or Fly By Night? And I too, as a youngster, was on that very third level, watching movies and other productions there at the Orpheum, so I remember that. So I'd love to see it restored. So thank you very much.
Ms. Rousseau.
Thank you. And Marie, thank you for that great tour and the presentation. And one of the things that caught my ear when you were showing us through the theater was some of the safety concerns that you noted. And I wondered if you could possibly reiterate some of the safety concerns that you note and that we should kind of keep top of mind as we're thinking about that.
Sure. So one of the things that I pointed out on our tour was there's an orchestra pit, which probably a better technical term for it, but that's what I call it. And in order to put the floor in, that's a people process. There's no lifts, there's no pistons to lift it or whatever, and so it takes people to be able to do that. And what that means is that then you're having people doing things that they can get hurt. And so although they're not our people, they're ASM Global people, and if they get hurt, that also really actually financially is not a good thing for us either. And just like with the city, we want everyone to go home just like they came. We want that safety to be a part of it. It's also about efficiency. So sometimes it's not just a safety thing, it's how quickly you can turn something over. And if you can drop those costs for the individuals of doing those kinds of jobs, that's really important. So the safety of those kinds of things is very important for both us and ASM Global.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, the thing that I think we're all hearing more than anything else is not just better bathrooms, but more. And I think whatever we do, we're going to have to figure out a way to do that. I love this idea of having a block-sized Civic Center. I love the potential of expansion to an indoor/outdoor type of event or space. But mostly, I like the idea of working with the space that we've got to get the best we can get out of it, to make it a comfortable experience for a fat guy to come see a show again, because it's a little like flying on an airplane going to Five Flags and the seats in the theater for a guy like me. And that's just not comfortable, but well worth it nonetheless. I share your concerns about the orchestra pit. That really needs to be modernized and hydraulic. That is so labor-intensive, and it's not easy labor, and it's not safe labor. There's no safety catches to keep something from falling if you don't get it quite right. Spiral staircase in the back, which is how all the actors have to get up and down for the dressing rooms, that's a people trap and kind of dangerous. Better access to the bisho room. Fly By Night does some of the best shows in theater, and it's hard for some people to get up and down there. We've got ways to get them there, but they're not pretty, and they're not attractive, and they should be. It should be, everybody's attractive for the customer who's chair-bound as for the customer that's walking in the door. So we've got to work on that. Everything you showed us, it's so obvious, the need for change, the need for improvement, the need for improvement concession space, the need for improvement in flow, the need for improvement in storage space, the need for better rigging opportunities in the arena. I'm excited about this. I'm excited that we may be able to do it. But I think top of mind, really, above everything else, and it's all very important, but we've got to make more bathrooms, not just better bathrooms.
Ms. Wethel.
So first of all, thank you. The tour was great, and just when you think you've seen all of it, you haven't. So I appreciated it. And yeah, I think we all are appreciative of the Civic Center Commission and the work they do and the efforts that they have put in, in the last few years especially. You know, certainly, that commission has worked hard for decades, but we've given them a real run for their money. The concerns I have, which Mr. Jones alluded to, is just the comfort, but ADA accessibility. I will say that if you had someone who was a performer in a communal shower that had a lip on it, or, I mean, there's just no way for us to even have people who are performers come and have a comfortable space there. So not just to ensure that we have, you know, people who are there as guests, but people who are there as performance comfortable and ADA accessible. From the stage, I've never witnessed it before, but the degradation of the plaster from that water leak, boy, that's heart-pulling, and I don't want that to happen anymore. And so I think that, I've had a lot of constituents ask me about the historic tax credit question as well. So I, boy, I just wish that there was some way that we could give as much as we could to that space to make it its beauty, but we need to at least maintain what we have for sure. As someone who has taken children to performances there, I had shared with you, I just don't know how to create more bathrooms and have it so that I could pull out the changing station and change a child's diaper and not be run over by people. It's almost impossible as it is now, but we're talking about needing more space for more bathrooms to make bigger alleyways between stalls. It's going to be a real tackle, but I would agree from what I have heard from constituents... more bathrooms to make bigger, bigger alleyways between stalls. It's going to be a real tackle, but I would agree from what I have heard from constituents, the bathroom issue, I think we all know from what we've heard, boy, I don't know how you fix that, but I think we can get creative. And then the experience, I really liked what you said about the before-show experience. A number of shows I have seen in larger cities or similar cities really do entice you to come early and spend space-time, meeting friends and congregating before a show. There's absolutely nowhere to do that now, and we're missing out on an experience as are our citizens because that would be such a fun way to spend a night, actually getting to before-a-show experience space. So I really do appreciate all that. I guess my biggest concern is, yes, we need more bathrooms, but you just talked about how we're going to have to expand the bathroom space we are, and if we kept the same footprint of the bathrooms and tried to expand the space, we'd actually be going down on the number of bathrooms. So I don't know, I know I've seen the versions of it, but I think that's where my biggest concern is.
Yeah, and you know, that's why you hire people who are real experts at this, who don't look at it like how it looks now. They can really, I mean, that's what architecture is about, envisioning the future. And so that's where you, you really work with picking the right firm to be able to help you re-envision it because it, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of work to figure it out if you stay in the same footprint, but yet there are ways to be able to do it. Sometimes it's because you're flipping this with this, and you're making this of this, and it wasn't that before, and like, you know, there's all those little cubby spaces, and so maybe you make the storage better, but then you open up a whole nother area and make the restrooms bigger, right? So those are the pieces where they get paid to be able to really look at that and bring that expertise to us. Or they can come back and say, nice idea, but that's going to be real difficult, and maybe they come up with another piece of how that can happen, right? So those are things I think, until you start going down there, but I do know that that's why they do what they do. Like, I do what I do because I'm an expert in that, but they do what they do so they can bring those kinds of ideas to you because they've seen much more, and they've designed around many other kind of challenging issues as well.
Mr. Spring?
Marie, thank you for that lovely tour. I've been through the facility for shows and such, but never really like took the time to just look up and get and have all the issues pointed out to me, and I do want to thank the commission for all their hard work. Today, what I just kept in my notes while we were walking around, outdated, end-of-life, everybody knows the facility's done. I didn't realize in '05 was the last time there was any renovation done, and clearly the $2 million has been well spent and well-used, and as everybody who owns an old house, it's time that we invest more. So I guess, what do you need from us to get this going? Because we're, I think we're all to the point where it's like, let's go. So I guess, what do you need next from us?
So I'll go ahead and respond to that. If the council has a general feel that they have a path that they'd like to take after this work session, we could put it on the December 19 City Council agenda for the City Council to approve that path, and obviously you can, you know, tweak it any way you want that night, but then once you took that vote, we would be, begin moving ahead with the money we currently have budgeted, and then we would be reconfiguring our budget through the March budgeting process that you would then approve, then the actual dollars to start making everything happen.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. This is a, I think this is a very helpful discussion. I have to tell you, you know, my disappointment still hangs on from where we've been and how long it has taken us. I think we all kind of feel that way a little bit, but I do feel particularly disappointed that things have happened the way they have, and it really isn't anybody's fault in particular. I mean, there have been so many variables at play that have brought us to where we are now, that it is just, it's just where we are, and we, this is basically the hand that we are dealt and what we have to work with. What excites me, though, is I feel a sense of momentum that we haven't felt for quite a while when it comes to Five Flags, and I think that that's a really good thing. I'm happy to see that we have a real possibility here from a funding standpoint that I think is something that the community can get behind. We can all admit that the community was struggling to get behind the idea of going much bigger, and it got harder and harder as things kept happening throughout society that made things more and more expensive. So the fact that we have an idea here that could, that we could move forward with is, I think, a really good one. Mr. Jones said something and said it pretty well, you know, he's mostly interested in making what we have the best that it can possibly be. That is what I would see as the hand that we're dealt currently. But what I, after going through the tour tonight, thinking about this more, looking at the ideas we have here, we have a real possibility to do that and do it well. Some things that I'm hearing, if I could summarize while I'm making my comments here, the bathroom situation is one that we're very aware of. We've been very aware of it for a while, and we know that we need, I do think I'm hearing we need more. We have space concerns, but I think, like you said, architecturally, it's something we could try to work with. I think we all know we need more. We need more space in there for people to use the restroom. We need accessibility to all areas, and we need space for people to congregate. We need space for people to be able to get concessions that they need to be able to get. All of those things, what I guess I would say is I think you're definitely thinking about this in the right direction, and all the staff that we heard from, I think we're thinking about this in the right direction, that, you know, if we're going to improve the things, let's improve the things we know we need the most improvement on. It's hard to look at the inside of the building, which I love very much because, I mean, you walk through and you see all the memories that we have, but it's hard to look at it and think that we don't need to improve absolutely everything that's in there. But I also think we need to be realistic and know what we can do with the money that we have. That said, I have to say, I am really excited about the possibility of this indoor/outdoor facility. When I think about what we were looking at before, which was going bigger, one of the, one of the problems that I had with it personally was that it seemed very much like what other places have around us. It's just bigger, that's all. This is different. This is unique. This is a draw. This is something that, there's a coolness factor to this that connects with all the other things that we're talking about downtown, in my mind at least. We've got, now, something else that's coming up on the agenda tonight that we may, we may move forward, depending on how the council feels, but there's a, you know, the art museum just a block away is looking at some advancement on the block that they have there. We have areas in Main Street that are continuing to improve. I mean, there's just a lot that's going on in downtown, and I think that that would add an excitement and make an area that people would really be drawn to. So if we could do anything, what I would hope is that we do anything now with our eye on that particular prize down the road in making future improvements, so what we build, we can build upon later. The one thing that I hope we, we take some caution on with that idea in looking ahead is, I know we're tired of talking about Five Flags. I know we, as a community, are just kind of tired of it, and I think what I hear is just a lot of, just some exhaustion of having to discuss Five Flags in some way. I don't want to be done with it yet. If we, if we move this forward, you know, to go through some of the improvements that we're talking about here, you bring that back to us in December, which, going back to you, Mike, I love that idea. I think, you know, we can get some consensus here before we wrap up and see where we're at. But if we move this forward, I hope that we can, we can continue to have the stamina to talk about this some more and further improve it in the future because I think it's a great possibility. I think it's a really good idea. I love the fact that the commission laid that out for us in detail, and if you haven't had a chance to look at it, in the agenda, there is some, some pretty good information from the Five Flags Commission in there. So, all that said, I don't think I have any particular questions except maybe one. The theater, going back to the theater, essentially, a pretty full makeover of the theater is included in the scenario we'd be looking at here, right? I mean, like, at least a facelift, but then making sure that we have seating and all the things that we need there?
Right. You know, that's, that's a part of, to me, the project needs to be both, and giving what's due to both. Now, what that means in the percentage of the project and that sort of thing, I think that's the pieces we have to work out. And they'll be just like if you do a house renovation. What's the priority? We don't quite have all the money. We'll figure that out. Definitely, there are some very specific needs within the theater that we want to make sure that we address, and some of those were things I pointed out, of just making sure we have the right seating, be able to get, make it so that it's a much better facility for ADA, and making it so that anyone can access it in the, in the same way as, as all of us able-bodied persons. And so those are really critical to that, and doing the things that are safety-oriented, like we talked about, being able to look at some of those efficiency things because it's that balancing act too of, of making sure it's a financially viable project as we finish, that we're trying to set it up to do the best it can financially for us because that operational cost will continue, so as much as we can do within that. So it's, without having the exact project, I'm always very cautious to promise what I don't know that I can deliver, right? But there are definitely things that, and that's where that engagement is. We look back to what people told us, as well as then we're talking to the people using it. We're really talking to the Symphony and being able to talk to them. But it was also pointed out tonight about how much people love the building. They absolutely love that. And so there is also this possibility with the theater that maybe there's someone who wants to kind of help us and do some private fundraising that really, if we can't afford it, maybe that brings the bar up in some way, or that they are willing to be able to be a part of this project, to be able to help make it a little bit more special in certain ways. And so I see that as a part of that engagement of can we do that? We can also look at, as we always do, and I, because I didn't mention it, we'll always look at what grants are available to us. There may or may not be any, but I already placed a call to Terry Goodman because, you know, that's what you do when you start talking these things, and we started brainstorming what, what might be possible, and if there are some potential funding sources, and we will try and do that too. So if there's any way for us to help stretch your money, our money, then we're going to try and do that as well, to be able to make it the best absolute project we can make it.
That's great. Thank you. That's great information. So we have a few minutes here. So before we wrap up, general summary, I kind of just pointed out some of the things that we talked about here, some ideas for you there. It seems like you have some general direction from us as a council on where you would need to go at this point, but would you, are there some more specifics that you'd like at this point? Mike, I'm asking that in your direction too?
I don't think so, based on the discussion I've heard at December 19 council meeting. We'll bring to you for approval, moving ahead with a $24 million investment in the Five Flags facility, and then the real approvals would come through the budget process. And I would mention one thing in the discussions. We had two meetings with the Five Flags Commission, and obviously from their correspondence, they're very supportive. And while we keep talking about the framework of that option two from the study, I asked them to consider it that what's happened, should this get approved, is that they have $24 million to invest in that facility, and now they have to make the decisions or recommendations to you of how that money gets invested. So that option two is just sort of a framework. It's not as if we're going to hand that to somebody and say, here, do this.
Yeah. So we're really, really working at this from the angle of we have a cap that we know, and we need to think about that financially and fit whatever plans we have into that financial picture. Okay. All right. And yeah, Ms. Barbara?
I just wanted to ask one question about the naming rights and how we generate revenues, and I'm not sure if that is for capital improvement or if it's mainly for operational purposes. Is that something also that we could explore for garnering revenue and opportunity for expansion?
So my recommendation would be you reserve those kinds of things for the operating expenses because that's an annual subsidy that you have to pay right now out of your property taxes, and it sure would be nice to not only reduce it by the fact that you have a better facility, so you make more money off the better facility, but that you also have a facility that people would be proud to put their names on, and they'll pay you to do that, and I would recommend you take that money and reduce the taxpayer burden on the annual operating costs.
And then would you also just parallel that with the concession revenues in that respect to the monies that we gain from concessions? The percent that we get back, that also goes just into operating funds?
The concessions revenue is a part of the ASM Global budget, and so the way our, our agreement with them is structured is the benchmark. So of course, the more that they sell concessions, then that, a lot of times, will help them come under the benchmark, which then in our current agreement, then if they come under that benchmark, then we split 50/50. So we win at 50% of whatever they come in underneath that, under our current agreement as it stands.
And then that's operational funding, is my question as well. Okay.
Yep, that's operational. So if, if it comes in under, as it did this last year, then 50% goes to them, but we kept 50% because we didn't have to pay that into Five Flags, which this year then went to the 8% of the CPI that went up that we thought was going to be five.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, this has been a great discussion, and thank you so much for a great tour, to Marie and everyone who was able to join us there, everybody who's helped to push this forward. Special thanks to the commission for spending some serious time on this and working to help us move this forward, especially now, and thank you to everyone for your patience. It's been quite the ride, but we're, we're still going here. So there being no further business in this work session, we'll be adjourned until the regular meeting in a few minutes.